Good morning or afternoon, wherever you may be. Gonna wait just a few seconds. I see people are still hopping in from the lobby and then we'll get started. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. People might join us here in the next minute or so, but that's okay. I'm so glad you joined us this morning. This is the science session. My name is Nora Walsh. I teach chemistry at FJ Wright High School in Evansville, Indiana. I teach chemistry one, honors chemistry one, and AP chemistry, which mostly gives me sophomores and juniors. I have a few seniors here and there. This is our logo, where the Panthers. I'm also a featured contributor for Chemical Education Exchange, which is an online site for chemistry teaching tips, demos, articles, things like that. So check that out sometime if you would like to. I talk about how I use Quizlet on there sometimes as well. So this is the study session, excuse me, for science. So we have about forty-five minutes together and I'm gonna just share some ways that I use Quizlet in my classroom to make fun, interactive practice in science that provides immediate feedback for the students. And for me, that is the biggest thing. It's immediate feedback. It's engaging. It's something the students can come back to again and again if they want to. So I'm gonna get into details of all of that here today. So I just wanna start really quick with a poll. How have you used Quizlet already? So up until today, in what way have you used Quizlet in your classes to generate materials? And you can answer more than one option here. This is interesting. Okay, so just gonna talk through a couple of the results real quick. If you're still entering, that's fine. I'm gonna let it go for another couple of seconds. So the majority of people, almost ninety percent of you said that you've made a flashcard set, which is not surprising to me because even before you were teachers, or I know before I was a teacher, I used Quizlet as a student to make flashcard sets. And of course, that's the kind of, you know, OG Quizlet is flashcard sets. And then the next biggest thing is you guys created a class, which is really great to hear. And within the classes, you've made folders. And the reason that that's really great to hear, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit more in just a second, is that by creating a class, your students get the benefit of your your Quizlet features. And so it also gives you feedback from your students and helps you organize it. So let's just keep going right along here. So when you set up your classes, you first wanna create your classes. And you can do it either by period or by course, depending on how you personally like to organize things. So me personally, I like to organize by course. So for example, here is just a quick screen grab of what my AP chemistry class, just the top of it looks like. And so all of my AP chemistry students I load into here. I have another class for honors chemistry, another class for on level chemistry. I have different periods within those classes, but for me and my organization, that makes the most sense. And maybe you would rather do it by period, but I find that personally, this helps me to refresh for the next school year just much quicker, and that's important to me. So then you, after you create the class, you invite students to join the class. So doing this with your learning management system is super easy by sharing the link. You can see that over here. You can add students manually, which is really great if you're doing a smaller class, especially if you were to have something like an independent study, maybe that you wanted students to be in. Or students can find your class and ask to join. I actually had some students that I don't know, that are not at my school, find my class and ask to join. But that's maybe the fastest way. If you have students come in mid-year, or if you have, you know, if you're tutoring a student from another school, that kind of thing. Once you've created your class, then you begin creating your materials and organizing materials that you have or that you find. So that's when you begin to curate your sets. So what does this look like? So I think there's four good options for creating sets, at least in my world. The first thing is to find another set and use it as is. And if you do that, it usually takes me less than five minutes to find someone else's set and use it as is. You search for it, you find it, you adopt it, and you add it to your collection in folders or in your courses or both. So what I think is really cool, and especially for science, is you can actually filter here, see? And so what I really like to do is this content type. And so some sets include diagrams, which is super helpful in science, because we use so many models, graphs, charts, figures in science. And so you can filter for sets that have those diagrams, which is sometimes really helpful, especially depending on the topic that you're looking at. You can find another set to use as a starting point and edit it to make it perfect for your classes. And this usually takes less than ten minutes. And up until now, this is probably what I have done the most often. It's kind of unusual that you find the perfect set happens. But usually you have to take a set and add to it or edit it a little bit, remove some cards that don't apply to you, add some things and things along that, those lines. And so that's really easy to do down here at the bottom. So you can find the set that you like the looks of, and then go down here to where it says save and edit. And then that is makes a copy of it essentially, and then makes you the owner of the copy, and then you can edit it how you want. And it does not change the original owner's set. The third thing you can do, and this is what I plan on using more this year. I'm very excited about this, is you study guys to create sets from existing notes you have or your lesson plans. And I've got a couple of ideas for how I'm gonna use this this year that I'm gonna share with you in just a few minutes. You can also make your own set from scratch. I have done this. This is the most time intensive thing. And I think actually with study guide, this is gonna become something that I do less often. But in the event that you, this is when it might be helpful. If you have a worksheet, like a traditional worksheet, and you wanted to turn it into a Quizlet, then this might be the best option for you. And I did do this one time with something I'll show you here in a few minutes. I had a mole conversions worksheet that I really liked, that my students got a lot out of, but I wanted to turn it into a set. And so I went in and I typed in the questions, and then I put in the answers. So then, once you've done this, then you've got all these options about when to use Quizlet. And if you've only used Quizlet for sets, I want to show you some other opportunities to start with a set and then use it in different ways. So if you've only used it kind of as a traditional flashcard thing. So when can you use Quizlet? So you can use it at the beginning of class. So you can use an earlier set as a warm-up to spiral your review. You could use a set with a diagram as a pre-lab activity. For example, I have a QR code here that will show you that. It's got a diagram, and then it asks certain things about it. So you can grab that QR code. By the way, I forgot to say, this presentation will be available on Zoom for the next month, and then it will be loaded onto YouTube, onto Quizlet channel on YouTube. So you can always check it out later. And if you have questions, drop them in the Q and A, and I'm gonna get as many of those as at the end as I can. Okay, so you can also use Quizlet in the middle of class. And this is when I would say I spend a lot of my time with Quizlet. You can do what we talked about a second ago and convert a worksheet into interactive practice. And again, that's hugely important with the whole immediate feedback, which I think is so important for students. Instead of waiting for you to tell them if they got the answer right or wrong, they are empowered to see if they got the answer right or wrong as soon as they submit an answer. You can also refresh foundational skills from prior courses or prior units before moving into a new lesson. So if you're doing a transition in class that day, then maybe that's something that would be good for the middle of class. So again, if you're, you know, at least in chemistry, you might want to refresh that one-step mole conversions before you move into stoichiometry. At the end of class, you can use sets as your own repository of learning check questions. And so we're gonna talk about this too, but one of the ways you can do that is essentially use Quizlet as your test bank, if you wanna think of it that way. And you can make sets that you set to private, and then you can pull questions from them for your learning checks, or your check for understanding, or your exit ticket, or whatever terminology you you use. You can also use checkpoint to see how students are doing on a certain topic. So for example, up here, and this is what I was just talking about. So you can have it visible to everyone, certain classes, people with a password, or just me. So personally, I would set it to just me with one exception. You can maybe make it people with a password. If, for example, you had an observer coming in and you wanted your observer to be able to see your Quizlet set after, but you didn't want your students to be able to see it, you could give them a password. And so then only people with a password can edit the set. That's also really great if you have a team, and you want your PLC or your team to be able to edit a set collaboratively. At the end of a unit, and this is, well, okay, you can use Quizlet sets as a study guide. Okay, and so that's really cool. And there's several ways you can do this. You can have the set generated at the end, but what I think is really powerful would be to have a set that you're generating as you go. You could also have students identify a weak topic and practice that weak topic using Q chat. And what I like to do there is I like to pair a Quizlet set here that you use as a study guide with Q chat. So have them do the set in class or out of class. You could, you could decide that. And then have them choose the topic within the set, or maybe two topics or three topics that they were the weakest on, and have them engage with Q chat to strengthen that. And you can have students generate a practice test based on a study guide file that you push out. So if you have an old-style study guide and you wanna update that and make it more modern, you could push out that same study guide without any changes to students, and you could have them load that into Quizlet to create a practice test. And then I've got some more ideas for how to update traditional study guides too in just a, in just a minute. At the end of the term, and this is, I learned this in unconference last year, and it has been a game changer. You can combine sets. And that is so hugely powerful for you and a big time saver at the end of a semester. So you can take existing sets that you already have, and you can combine them to create a large set for review that has all of them together. And then what's really great about that is then, oops, excuse me, is that you can, you can do all the things you would do with a regular set. You can do Quizlet Live, you can do checkpoint, you can do blast. But it inherently has that kind of shuffle feature, right? So students then have to do this integrated review, which is so, I find that my students don't think about that. They think that once they know a single topic, they'll be able to do it anytime. And then I've had a lot of students come back and they're like, it threw me off that everything was all scrambled together. Yes, that's, that's the nature of the end of course assessments, right? And so combining sets is just so fast for you to do in Quizlet to create these really powerful, in-depth, massive, but hugely impactful for your students' sets without you having to go and redo that work. So again, the agile educator, this is like a huge time saver. I did that so many times last year. And you can do that more than once, by the way. So what I like to do is if I have a, I've started something called Quizlet Wednesdays, and I do a Quizlet warm-up in my AP class every single Wednesday. And what I do is I take this, I'll take a couple of sets and I'll combine them. And then I might do, you know, this week I might just focus on one topic that they're weak on. And next week I might combine three different sets and have it be that, and so on and so forth. So you can combine sets in whatever way you want. Okay, so I have another poll for you. So where you sit right now today, in what way have you already used Quizlet in class with your students? So I'm just really curious in which of these things you've already used. So we've got match, classic, live, blast, checkpoint, flashcards, learn, test, and Q chat. This is fun because you guys, it's always fun to see how teachers are similar and how they're different. And for the most part, I'm lining up exactly as you are. I think a lot of us have used flashcards. So eighty-two percent of you guys said that you had used flashcards. A lot of us have used classic live. So those were my two entry points into Quizlet as a user. And I've been using Quizlet regularly in my classes for over a decade. Flashcards are great. Of course, that's the kind of like entry point to Quizlet, I think. But in science, like especially as we move more into the next generation science standards, and we're moving more towards deep concepts and less from vocabulary, right? Flashcards is something that you might have students refresh, but it's not the core of the lesson. And so that's when I kinda got into what are other ways to use Quizlet, like taking a worksheet and making interactive practice with it. Live was actually brought to me by my students. So I was doing a different type of review game. And the other type of review game that I was doing had a timer, right? Kind of Jeopardy-style. There was a timer involved. And I had done review games for years and years and years in various modes, but they always had a timer. And I kind of thought that was necessary to make sure my class kept moving. What my students told me is they said that they found the timer kind of stressful, because it felt like there was this clock that was counting, because there is, there's clock that's counting down, and that that kind of made them feel frantic, and it made them make silly mistakes. And what I like about live is that there's no timer, but the fact that you display on your screen the progress of the teams, that is what keeps the course, the, the class moving. And so they don't slow down and get bogged down in questions because they want to keep up with their classmates. But at the same time, it's not the set timer, which again, in science is really important, I think, because there are questions that they can do so quickly. But then there's other questions that take them a little bit of time. So if we're gonna have them do, you know, a calculation, that might take longer than, you know, whatever fifteen seconds you've got built into your PowerPoint slide, for example. So, and then blast is really new. And so I actually have not used blast with a class yet, but I'm really excited to, because my students always like gamified reviews activities. So blast is gonna be really fun. And then learn and test and checkpoint, and all of these are just really very cool tools that you can use in your toolbox. And so what I wanna do is show you some different ways to use them today. So let's talk about the beginning of class with the warm-ups and the intro. So what my goal is for the next several minutes together with you is to give you some ideas about different points in class when you're making your plans this coming school year, where you can use different features of Quizlet. So for warm-ups and intro, if you want to review terms, then maybe you want to do match. Okay, and so match, of course, is great for students, because my students always love match, because they're like, the answer's there, I just have to find it. So it's a little bit multiple choicish, but leveled up with match, because, you know, they've got all the answers in front of them. And so it might, you know, be more than just four choices. So match is a really great way to review terms. You can practice the previous day's concept by using checkpoint. Okay, and so here, this is what checkpoint looks like. So if you've got a set, then here's the term, and then here's a question, and you can select those. So you can choose which ones you want to use in checkpoint. I believe you can also just randomly choose in checkpoint. Very, looking at the poll, only a handful of you have used Q chat. And I've found my students really like Q chat a lot. So this is what's pretty cool about Q chat. Q chat, first of all, if you look over here on the side, Q chat has options, right? So you can ask Q chat to teach me, quiz me, apply my knowledge, ask a question. And so there's different ways that you can use Quiz chat, uh, Q chat, excuse me. So it is powered by AI, but I am very, I feel safe about using this in my classes, because it's kind of protected, you know, like, so it's a safe way for students to engage with AI. And we know the AI is here, and it's so important. It's gonna be so impactful moving forward with technology. And so we want students to engage with AI. So here's me just kind of showing you what Q chat can look like. And so what you could do is you could tell your students, hop on Quizlet, go into Q chat, and then go ahead and ask it, you know, engage with it for five minutes. And this is where I think a timer would be helpful. And then, but then they can all personalize that interaction with Q chat, which is really powerful. And then you can explore a new concept with learn. Okay, and so learn is designed to be like, it's that question and answer thing, but it's designed to be initial kind of knowledge. And so you can skip it, which is really helpful and that kind of thing. And then you can, that can lead into questions from your students, which I think is really great. So then in the middle of class, this is what, this was kind of the first way that I used Quizlet for something other than vocabulary, is I used Quizlet to take these worksheets and turn them into interactive practice. And so this is what that looked like for, you know, one of these, the small conversions, kind of legacy worksheet that I was talking about. And so you can practice these calculations and then immediately check their answers. And there's a lot of ways students can do this, and there's a lot of software that students can do this on. But the reason I like doing it in Quizlet is then with that combined sets feature, it's such an easy way for you to then integrate conversions into these vocabulary sets that you might already have. And so again, Quizlet can kind of be like your one-stop repository for a variety of questions that you might want to have your students interact with. Then, okay, come on, there we go. Okay, at the end of class, here's a unique thing that maybe you haven't thought about before, post-lab error analysis. So error analysis is pretty high-level thinking, right? And so on this side, you'll see I've actually included the Science and Engineering Process Standard that is in NGSS, and therefore in a lot of our state standards as well. So one of them is asking questions and defining problems. And this is a really high-level task to ask students to do. So how can we do that with Quizlet? And the answer is actually pretty well. So post-lab error analysis, so what I did with this is I created a set, and I dropped in some errors, some common errors for a lab that I wanted students to think about, but I made it so that they could edit it. So I showed you a few slides ago how you can create, who can, you can set, who can edit your sets. And so I made it so my students could edit the set. And then they dropped in errors that they found in the lab, and then how it impacted their results. And so then you have this really robust analysis. And this is really great too, especially if you have an assessment where they have to do like, design a lab, like in AP bio, and I believe in AP physics, they have to kind of set up a lab. And then in AP chemistry, what they do a lot is they give them a couple of steps and then leave out a step, and they have to fill it in. And then sometimes they say, you know, the student did this, how did that impact the results? So here you go. This is a way that students can practice that. And so I put in the, the error and, and then, you know, how it would impact the results. So and then, of course, I can come back and visit that later, which is the power of Quizlet, is you can use it in class and students can use it out of class seamlessly. Here's another end-of-class idea would be checkpoint. So here's a fast way to use checkpoint. You can find an existing set that matches your topic. And then you can select checkpoint, choose the questions that you want to use in checkpoint, or you can randomize it, all right? So you can see select six to twelve questions. So this is someone else's set on subatomic particles. So I just chose their set. And then I said I wanted to do checkpoint with it. And then this is great, because instead of having to go in and edit a set, you can just choose the questions that you like out of there, out of this set to use in your class. I also think this is really great, because sometimes, you know, we all get to a point where our students are asking questions, asking questions, and it's like, okay, I'm not sure they got that in the way that I thought they did. And so this is something that you could, I have actually sat down and I'm like, clearly, we're not ready to go on. But it's data that I got in the moment, like from a warm-up, like a warm-up did not go the way I expected it to. And so what I do is I have my students do something else for five minutes. I sit down, I pull up Quizlet, I find a set, and then I have them do a Quizlet. And so I have done that on more than one occasion. And so it can be this kind of like backup emergency extra practice, like, whoa, we cannot do the lesson I had planned for you today. This is not how I expected this to go. I need to do something else. I remember vividly that that happened one time after we'd had a snow day or two, and I really thought they would have remembered. Silly me. And so, like, I, I was ready to move on with, with the content, the next lesson that was coming. Absolutely not. They were not ready to move on. It couldn't happen. And so I just, I don't even remember what I had them do. In the meantime, I think I had them do a turn and talk that related to the warm-up. And I sat down, and I pulled up Quizlet, and I found a set, and I launched it to the students, and we did classic live. And so in less than five minutes, I was able to do a total pivot of my lesson. And so another powerful thing about Quizlet is that it is this really flexible tool that you can do that kind of thing with. I wanted to show you this because I was so impressed. I was so impressed. So this is a note sheet. This is not even mine. I don't remember what fantastic teacher I got this from, but this is a note sheet on intermolecular forces, which students struggle with, especially initially. So what I did was I uploaded a document, this document into study guide. Okay, so I dropped this document, looked just like this, into study guide. And I used the automatically generated flashcards to generate a checkpoint or any other activity. So I wanted to show you what that looked like, because again, I was so impressed. So this was the original document. This is what it looked like in study guide. Okay, and so then, once it pulled into study guide, you can do flashcards, sample essay questions, Q chat. You can edit all of this. So you see how this is highlighted there. So I can add in extra things there also. You're gonna notice they've added new features to study guide, which are super powerful, and they're gonna be amazing. You can click on it, and AI will help you, like, if you have a question about it, AI will give you more information. And then you can choose, it's almost, it's almost like the integrated study guides and Q chat together a little bit. So, so it will give you more information, which you can then add to the study guide. And so I wanted to specifically talk about this, because one of the things I'm planning on doing is pushing out these legacy study guides that in previous years I might have had my students type into or annotate or make notes on, or just say, hey, here's a list of topics. I'm gonna have them upload that into study guide and then have them flush it out. And so this is a powerful way to use materials you already have, or something that you can make relatively quickly, and then have the students do the thinking. And of course, that's where the learning is, when the students do the thinking. As much as possible, we want to guide their experience, but we, they are the ones that are having the experience. And so we want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to engage like that. And so then this is the set that was made from that upload. And so this whole process of going from, you know, document to uploading it into study guide, and then creating the set was less than five minutes. And it's something that, you know, there's a little bit of, that's a small amount of processing time. Upload study guide, go over here, type out your lesson plan a little bit, come back to study guide, make your set, choose what activity you want. Of course, also, there's eight options to choose from. So it's just, it's so helpful, and it's such a time saver and a time maximizer, right? And of course, again, Quizlet has staying power. It's not going away. So your, your cards, your sets are there, and you can use them year after year after year after year. So then maybe you're thinking about a whole class activity. Okay, so what might this look like when you integrate it with Quizlet? So here's a suggestion for you. FET, if you don't use FET, highly recommend huge amount of simulations for all grade levels. And what's great about it is this kind of three-dimensional analysis and thinking. So this is on molecular geometry, which is kind of student, students have a difficulty with this, because they're used to seeing two-dimensional shapes on paper, and then we ask them to think about it three-dimensionally. And that transition can be really hard. And it's great if you have manipulatives that they can build with. But we don't all have those resources, and also that takes a lot of time. And so this is a way, you know, students can turn this and spin this and look at it. And so it, it has this three-dimensional appearance. So they can explore it with FET, and then they can master it with learn. Okay, so maybe they'll turn on, you have them turn on the name and the molecular geometry, and then you go down here with learn, and you can start to see how, okay, this is, if you see it written this way on a test, this is how you should be visualizing it. And so a split screen is a really cool way to use Quizlet while they're learning as well. And you could even go the opposite way. Instead of, you could have them pull up learn and find the shape, and then go into FET and manipulate it to make that shape. So check out each of these options here and see which one is actually it. And so that's kind of a subtle way for you to be a teacher ninja and ask the students to do some analysis that's safe for students, because here's all the options, and they just have to decide which one is the right one. Out of class, students can use Quizlet on their own. And I think, I know one goal I have for myself this year is, last year I switched to next generation science standards. I teach in Indiana, and we adopted last year. And one of the things that I realized when I kinda came to the end of the year is I don't think I built in enough time in class for review, specifically for kind of like permanent record of their review. So what do I mean by that? Like, I didn't have students write down notes and things along those lines in a summative cumulative way, and I wish I had. And so this year I'm gonna do more of that, and I'm going to inherently come back to some of these study skills that in this transition to NGSS and the in this transition to NGSS in the first year, um I just didn't it fell off my radar, to be totally honest. So I'm gonna show students some of these ways that they can use Quizlet out of class. So of course, they can go into our class folder and our sets and they can practice that using flashcards or or um learn or anything like that at home. But there's also um expert solutions. And what's really great about expert solutions is that they provide step by step answers to questions from textbooks. And this can be such a huge time saver for you. So it allows students to get support on how to do a problem, not just the final answer, which prevents this comment. I don't get it, any of it. Like when they say, I don't get it. And you're like, where are you stuck? They're like, I, the whole thing, I can't do any of it. Expert Solutions helps with that because it allows the students to pinpoint exactly where their misstep was. And that's hugely powerful for them as growing learners to analyze where they got lost. But it's also a huge time saver for you, the instructor in class, because if they can tell you okay, I got all the way to this point. And then I didn't understand the rest of it, then that's where you pick up, right? And so that's where you, the in-class, in-person expert can help them. Um, and so what, the easiest way to do this is students search for their textbook and then they navigate to the chapter and question that they need to see. And so there's a lot of books that are loaded in. If you don't have a textbook, like we don't have a textbook. Um, in my district, one thing you could do is use this as a way to assign textbook questions. Um, even though you don't have one, and then students would have the power of expert solutions behind it. So you can browse by subject. So this is what just a snapshot of what that looks like, you know, so there's chemistry, physics, biology, and so on and so forth. So then at the end of the unit, I said, you, you know, you can combine sets and do some things like that. Um, here's a way you can do some model analysis. So this is, I took an outstanding um study sheet from my friend Michael Farabaugh, and I turned it into a Quizlet. And so this is for titration curves, which students inherently, you know, titrations are are an advanced uh analysis thing for students that they sometimes struggle with. So again, if we're thinking about the steps of developing and using models, you can use diagrams to reach a higher level of analysis. And so this actually asks students to relate several different types of models. So a term with a particle view diagram and relate that to a position on a curve. And so this is really advanced thinking. Um, and then what I had students do is I actually had them use match. And then they lined up the term with a graph or the particle diagram with the graph and so on and so forth. Um, what I did figure out is that they it helped if I kind of had um like you know, here's the curve, like one curve, and then because it has this zoomed in view um. So you know, sometimes you might put Quizlet on their screen and then also have a reference over here to the side, like just as a reminder, here's the four types of titration curves or something like that. And by the way, that's a way that you could integrate, like I do interactive notebooking. So here, open your notebook to this page, pull up your Quizlet. You have your notebook reference and then you have your Quizlet that is related to that. So then that helps them also start to it reminds them that they have this content from class that they're then practicing and how how they can shift back and forth. Um, so that's huge as well. So then at the end, of course, I talked about combining sets and using practice tests. So to combine sets, I want to show you how to do this because again, game changer for me. It's such it it was this gigantic Eureka lightbulb moment saved me so much time last year. Go into a set. Uh, and then go down to the kind of edit part at the bottom, click combine. And then you merge, that will pull up a new window and it's like create a new set. And then you merge, you can select sets from your library. So you do need to have them saved um to make a cumulative set that you can give a new name. And so I would give it a name like uh quarter one, week one, whatever, quarter one, week two, whatever. And that that's just for me, how that worked. Uh, you can also do practice tests. So upload a study guide. Again, I'm going to have students, you know, I'm gonna give them a very uh brief outline. I'm gonna have them add into it. I'm gonna have them use study um study guide to do that. And then um they can have Quizlet make a practice test. This works best if there's some detail, but again, like you can provide the detail or you can have students provide the detail. Um. So and another thing I thought about doing is you could kind of create a Google Doc that you have students make their own study guide as they go um throughout the unit as a collaborative class activity, and then you could upload that um as well. So then this idea of three dimensional thinking um with the core ideas, and this is an NGSS thing, but a lot of us do this no matter if we're in NGSS state or not. Um, the science engineering practices integrate with the core ideas and cross cutting concepts. So this is what that can look like. So here's um here's a set that I have. And so this is match. And so this is nuclear decay. And so what I'm doing here is I'm having students relate the equations, the decay equations with symbols. Um, and then we've got the name of the different types of decay and then different uh diagrams of what that looks like. And then they just drag them on top of each other. Um, and that's a way to help students see I can describe the same thing in a lot of different ways. And then I always tell students like, don't worry about the time. I don't care what your time is. Um, in fact, I freaked a class out one day because I did it uh at the end of one class, uh Chem one class, and I didn't have Chem one again until the end of the day. And so it had been hours and I forgot to click stop on match and they're like, Miss Walsh. And it was like thousands of seconds. It was kind of funny. Um, if you want to dig more into how to use Quizlet in an NGSS classroom, that was the theme of my talk last year. And again, so you can go on YouTube and check out my talk from last year, which has very NGSS specific um ideas about how to integrate uh Quizlet into science classroom. Um, so you can use the images and diagrams to relate the core ideas. Okay. So then, now that I've given you some thoughts and ideas, um I'm curious as to how many of you expect to use Quizlet this upcoming school year. So I'm gonna launch the poll again. And um I wanted to go to say one more thing about Q chat. One thing that's kind of cool in helping students to understand the AI is imperfect. I did have them give me a little bit of a reflection in using Q chat. And so I had them go in and engage with Q chat for a specific amount of time. I set a timer on my board. I think I gave it five, seven minutes, something like that. And then for my exit ticket, I had them tell me was um what was the most useful thing about Q chat? And then did Q chat make a mistake? Because AI is imperfect. And so we want them to think about the fact that AI can make mistakes and they should be thinking reflectively about that. And so that's just a kind of a subtle way to reinforce this idea with students. So you guys, this is so powerful for me to see because, you know, we all started with, most of us, a lot of us had used flashcards, a lot of us had used live. And then, you know, there was a little, there was some, about half of us, a little less than half of us had used learn, test and match. And it looks like you guys have gotten some ideas and that's so exciting because that's what I wanted to be able um to do. So that is um let's see. Thank you so much for attending the session. So we've got a few minutes left. And so I am gonna hop in the Q and A. If you've got some more questions, feel free to drop them in Q and A. I'll do my best to get to as many of them as I can. Um, you can follow me on X, on Instagram and on TikTok. Um, this is my email address and this is my Quizlet username. If you want to go in and find my specific sets. And contrary to what my shirt says, I do not have all the solutions, but if you send me a message, I will absolutely do my best to try and support and help. So let's see what you guys had to say. Yes, the link to my Quizlets. If you go to my uh Nora underscore Walsh nine, you can see all of those. Okay, um, if you use the test option, will the grade embed into an LMS and is it canvas specific? Okay, um, I do not think so. Um. But let's see, it said Nikki would like to answer this question live. So Nikki, if you know the answer to that, feel free to chime in. Because my experience has been no. Okay, so if Nikki might pop in and be able to answer some of the questions with you about the grades, because there's several questions on that with students. Progress on checkpoint show in class data. Um, are there ever problems with AI giving inappropriate information? Yes, there is, but it is AI, it's generative AI, like all AI, uh, you know, it's no different than um than other AI that you might engage with. Um, and of course, the longer we use AI, the more AI will well, okay, let me back up. It depends on what you mean by inappropriate information. Um, my experience with Quizlet has been wholly positive, like students have not gotten anything that I wouldn't want their parents to see, for example, if that's what you mean by inappropriate. If you mean information that's incorrect, it has happened. Um, but usually it has happened to the point that students are able to say, no, that like, that's not what I was asking about. And then they reframe their question. Um. So what is the YouTube title to look at how to use NGSS? So I believe you go into the Quizlet YouTube channel. And then um I think there's a folder for Quizlet Unconference twenty twenty three and then study session, science. Um, how do you embed a fat simulation to Quizlet? So you can't embed the fat simulation itself into Quizlet, but what I would do is just a s- a split screen. Um, and have the students like tell them, pull up this link and pull up this link. That's what I do. Um, you could actually um you can kind of mimic the images in FET on Quizlet if you um use in order to do uh diagrams on Quizlet, you have to have Quizlet plus membership, which I do. And I I find it worth it um because of the amount of time that it saves. And so you can then do diagrams in Quizlet with um pictures. And so then that's how you could kind of do that. Uh, our fat and was like, no, they're not teaming up. That's just me. I just like to use them together. So if I was um unclear about that, I apologize. Let me be very clear. FET and was that are two different things. It's just two of my most used tool uh tools in my science class. And so I really like to highlight both of them. Then, let's see. Um, how do you follow a teacher like me on Quizlet? So you can um go into Quizlet. And then I think you can search for a person. Um. And then do it that way. So. Nora Walsh nine. Yeah, so then um ah, it's not gonna work because of the green screen. So I searched for myself and then there I am. And then I don't know um. You can do that. And then I think there is a way to um follow them. I have to say not sure how to do that off the top of my head. On the app, I think you can do it on the computer. Okay, let's see. Students add incorrect information when making their notes. Does this potentially make the AI learn incorrect information? Um. I believe AI I don't actually know. I don't know. This is kind of a a new thing. And so I haven't used, I have not had the students upload a study guide themselves and then use, because that's a new feature. Um, I have always kind of controlled that. I have uploaded the study guides and then used it to create the sets and then launch the sets. Um, but anything like, you know, AI is learning all the time. And so that's a great question that I don't actually know the answer to. So, um. That, let's see. Is Quizlet compatible with classroom? Yes. So you can actually share a set directly to your classes from Quizlet. Um, when you go into share set, one of the things is uh share via classroom, you click on that and it pulls up a window that shows your classroom classes, your Google Classroom classes, and you just click on that and then it launches it super fast. I do that all the time. Uh, I'm not sure about limiting the AI. My guess is no, but I don't actually know. Okay, um, so let's see if there was something else. Students' progress on checkpoint show in class data. I know you get data. Okay, um, Nikki, if you wanted to come, answer any of these, feel free. Although we are right out of time. There you are.
Yes, can you hear me? Any questions? Um, any questions that we didn't get to or don't have uh answers for at the moment, feel free to email them. I sent it in the chat to it's unconference underscore twenty four at two unconference underscore twenty twenty four, Quizlet dot com. Um, and someone from the team who has that information will get back to you.
Okay, um, and then to real quick, yes, you can get a recording of the session. It will be on um Zoom. Oh, you put that in. Okay. All right, guys, thank you so much um for attending. Um, Susan, I'm so glad you use my notebooks. I love sharing them. Um, really appreciate everyone being here. Feel free to email me as well. Um, and then follow me on any of these platforms. Have a great unconference. Um, look for your PD session at the end of the day. Nikki, have I forgotten anything? Nope. Okay, we're good to go. Have a great rest of your summer. I wish you a very happy school year. Um, get your nerd on and enjoy teaching science because it is the best. Bye.